It being seven o'clock, we'll open the planning board meeting for Monday, October 24th, 2022. First off, let me ask, is anybody planning on recording the meeting tonight? Okay. So, in addition to tonight's video recording on Oxford Cable Access pursuant to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Those making a recording must inform the chair if possible, have individual... Oh yeah, I'm sorry about that. All attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. All right. So, the first part of the meeting will open up to the plans not requiring subdivision approval, since we do not have any of those. We won't do that. You want to jump to something quick? Go ahead, Tony.
Sure. Just as we're going through the agenda, your submissions, we have not received... She places on the agenda as a placeholder for a scenic road special permit. We have never received a completed application. However, just to provide a, I guess, a preview, for a one-time Dania Road application for a special permit, and this is relative to scenic road designation on Dania Road, the applicant seeking to alter a stone wall within the limits of the road and right of way. The applicant seeking a driveway permit, until such time that they receive the permit approval from this board, the driveway permit is on hold. And we do anticipate getting a complete application soon. We have it on the agenda for the next meeting as a submission. Will require to be advertised through the traditional process for a special permit. So we anticipate either late November or December when this will come up.
Okay. Awesome.
So just wanted to share that. I know it's been some time since we've had a scenic road special permit before the board. The applicant has worked already with the town tree warden as well. This portion would solely be for the alteration of the stone wall to allow for a driveway into a residential.
Probably a break in the... Putting a break in the stone wall, I'd say.
Correct, correct. So at this time, there is no completed submission before the board to schedule a public hearing.
Okay. And we don't have any minutes to look through? We have no minutes to approve? Okay. All right, so we gotta... So we wait another two minutes? Unless you can do the planner report in two and a half minutes?
A very brief report, whether it is now or later in the evening. But I will be sending an email out tomorrow, just some upcoming events to CMRPC and the Planner Training Collaborative, or I hope across some new dates or new workshops upcoming that the board may be interested in. If there's any interest, by all means, let us know. Mary or I would be happy to register. So, I know, Mr. Chairman, I know you and others have partaged in a good slate of upcoming workshops. Most are virtual now, too, which is appreciated. And still looking forward to that. And CMRPC, they have their Imagine 2050, our, it's not theirs, it's ours, too, right? Division Master Plan for the Region. There is a survey that we'll be posting also on the town's social media regarding all things transportation throughout the region. So I'll be happy to share that tomorrow with all the members.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Being 7:05, we're gonna have a continued public hearing for 46, 48, and 50 Harwood Street. Application for a special permit and land disturbance permit. Applicant and owner is DJ Enterprises Incorporated. Common driveway to serve three lots. So I don't think we have... We have nothing new on that?
Nothing new. The last update was the report from Graves Engineering, which I provided an additional copy of it. It's been some time.
July.
Report was completed over the summer. I will note to the board that the action date is around the corner, November 14th on this one. We did reach out to the applicant, too. I don't know if there's anyone in the audience on this item, but we have not heard anything further from the applicant.
And we're waiting for information, right? They would...
I needed a response from the peer review from Graves.
Okay.
We should still try to get them to sign a... No, we'll be acting.
So we'll have to vote on it at the next meeting? Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we submit a form to the proponent of this development and have it filled out with a new time of action date.
Yes.
To be completed and submitted to this board for our next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion on that?
Do we want to indicate that if there is no response, we reserve the right to...
Okay. If there is no response, then...
We'll deny the application.
We'll deny the application.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Well, we could all... There's a possibility we could approve it on the 14th, too, if everything comes together in a perfect world, but we don't want to, like, threaten anybody, do we?
Well, we want to let them know that they're running out of time.
Right. Okay. Sounds good.
Create a sense of urgency.
Yeah. But I'd also suggest that we make the action date into January, because again, there's only gonna be one meeting in December if they're not...
I don't know where they stand. They don't even come in here to give us an update.
No, we haven't seen them in a meeting yet.
It's just that, like, they disappeared. And like Tony said, he put something in there dated July 8th from Graves. We've never received any response. What's going on? Other than the market is changing on them.
Right.
Okay, so in your motion, you suggested a date, right? For the next meeting?
Well, we're gonna have a meeting on the 14th.
Okay.
But we don't want to wait till that meeting in case something should happen and we can't react, and then it'll get constructively approved. I don't want to do that.
Okay. Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. I'll vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Thank you. It being 7:10, we have a public hearing for 10 Cypress Street. Application for special permit submitted by JFC Pros Construction to allow the construction of an occupancy of an addition for use as an in-law apartment attached to the existing single-family dwelling on the property located in the R3 Residential Zoning District. So let me start out by... Yep. Hold on one second. Let me start out by reading the public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 3, Subsection 3.9 Apartments, accessory in-law, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 7:10, in the second-floor meeting room of the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. On a special permit application submitted by, excuse me, JFC Pros Construction to allow for the construction occupancy of an addition for use as an in-law apartment attached to the existing single-family dwelling on property located at 10 Cypress Street, Oxford, Mass., in the R3 Residential Zoning District owned by Norman J. Balco and Sarah K. Balco, ID'd, recorded with the Worcester District Registry ID 66024, paged 303, shown as Assessors Matt 33E, Parcel K04. The application may be viewed at the Town Hall, in the office of the Town Clerk, or the Land Management Department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at that place, date and time designated, or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. or 1540, or see masspublicnotices.org for legal notice. Got that out of the way. If you want to introduce yourself and give us an overview of what you're proposing.
I'm the owner of the JFC Pros Construction. I'm the general contractor. Sarah is here with me. She's one of the homeowners. She's married with Norm. They have three kids. The in-law apartment is being built for her mother. She lives in Michigan now. They lost the father last year, so she's living by herself. And this project is a family project. You know, we're doing this to unite the mom with the daughter and their family. It's not on the purpose of any increasing the house value. It's not gonna be a rental. It's a very, actually, straightforward job to accommodate the needs of the mother. As you can see on the project, we made sure that the whole addition stayed on one floor for her, so she can... Doesn't have any stairs to go up or down. She's at the age that you're gonna start needing help, and we want to bring her close to the family, so we can make that happen.
Excellent. First off, very sorry to hear about that.
Thanks.
Let's see. Tony, anything from...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, in your package, you do have a report from the Board of Health. Happy to read into the record. It dated October 13th, 2022, regarding 10 Cypress Street. Dear members of the Planning Board, the Board of Health at its October 12th, 2022 meeting, reviewed the request for a special permit regarding the proposed in-law suite at 10 Cypress Street. The board commented that updated septic plans have already been submitted and approved for a new septic system at 10 Cypress Street to accommodate the additional bedroom. Prior to any occupancy of the new in-law suite, the new septic system would need to be installed, inspected, and approved by the health agent. The Board of Health reserves the right to make additional comments as the project progresses and as any further plans are received. And so this was received by us on October 13th, of course, of this year, in standard comment and review, if you will, from the Board of Health.
Okay.
I know one of the things we talk about with these is the parking. Is there any kind of site plan about how... Where the existing parking is, whether any new parking is gonna be?
So, you have a fairly...
We have, like, a double driveway that can accommodate her car.
Okay. Is that on the left side of the... Must be... Obviously, it must be on the right side of... Oh, is it right in front?
Yeah.
I can add that to the plot plans. I didn't think it would be an issue, since it's going... We have plenty of parking for...
Yeah, we just asked that because we just need to signal that. You know what I mean?
No, that's fine. That's an easy do.
Not like a one-car driveway, or like, five or four cars in there, I assume.
Yeah, we have three right now, because my daughter's driving, so we'll fit the fourth car right in there. That last spot.
That's what happens. You have two other children, and they're gonna be driving, too. That's, you know...
Okay.
That's what you're kinda gonna look at.
You just want to make sure they don't go on the street, anyway.
If we have to increase the size of driveway, that's...
Well, it's something to think... I mean, in the future.
Yeah, in the future.
I'm just saying, right now, you have three. You're gonna have a fourth car there that's probably gonna fill up your driveway.
Yeah.
And I assume you have plenty of room to put another driveway if you had to.
Yeah, the land is...
Looks like there's a lot of room to the left.
The land is fairly big. And we also made sure to make something that is still within the required setbacks, so it is in compliance in that matter, so it's far away from... 20 feet from the proper line. I think the setback minimum on that area is 15, so...
Where is Cypress Street off of? Where does that end in Cypress?
It's right over here.
It's, yeah, over by the Chaffee Elementary School.
Oh, okay.
Off of Ross and Ave, I think. What, is it over...
Yeah, Wayne Street, and then Fair Lawn is the other side street.
I know, what... So you have a living room, a bedroom, and a bathroom, and a kitchen, right? Those are the four living areas.
They're all decent size, but nothing major, nothing big. It's just so she has her own space, you know? Make sure everything's fully functioning for her.
Yeah. We have 800 square feet...
Living, which is...
Approximate that we like to stick with. I'd say some of what you... You've got 923, and I noticed what, there's a walk-in closet, you know? Is that living space? Probably not. I wouldn't count closets. You're close enough to 800.
Yeah. Yeah. Got a big mud boom, which is nice, but that's not living space either.
Right.
No, I think it's a nice looking plan. I like the design.
Yeah. I liked it when I saw it.
Any...
My question was packing, too, so...
It's something to think about.
We always ask the question. We don't know what there is on the thing, because people don't put it on there.
Yeah.
Even though you put the layout of the buildings, packing is key, too.
Yeah.
That's bad about decision-making process.
Any more discussion? Anybody want to make a motion, or...
Yeah, make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second that.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff, to fill the public hearing. Any discussion on that? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve these special permit for the in-law apartment at 10 Cypress Street based upon drawings submitted. I don't see a date on them. That is on the first page. Date's missing.
Is it?
Don't come!
You're right. There is no date.
We updated it so many times.
When was the latest update, you know?
A couple months ago.
August.
You could say as submitted.
As submitted. As submitted.
I'll make sure I put the date, and I'll update the driveway when I submit it to the building apartments.
Yeah. Excellent.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
At 7:15, we have a continued public hearing for 27 Industrial Park East. Application for site plan review, special permit, land disturbance, and stormwater management submitted by ZP Battery Development Company LLC, 10 East Worcester Street, Worcester, Mass. For the construction, installation, and operation of an eight-megawatt AC energy storage system and other electronic electrical equipment on the property located in the industrial zoning district. Property owned by Mark Hattabeau.
Yeah, we do... These people, at least, are asking for an extension. I just wanted to know what the present date was. I'm sorry, the action date? Yeah. December 20th. Okay. Okay.
But we have a...
Well, they really... They really didn't need to fill that out, then.
Notice they want to continue, I think.
They just want... They just submitted it so we would put it on our next agenda.
Right.
That's basically it, so...
Do we even need any action on it, then?
Well, recommend it should be to continue this to the November 14th.
Oh, right, right.
At 7:05, yeah.
Okay.
They use it for that purpose, but it's usually a purpose where you want some more time for action.
I'll make that a motion.
Well, we gotta come up with a time.
7:05.
At this time, I recommend 7:05. Oh, you said that?
Yeah.
All right. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Roger. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 All right.
Unanim... Oops, sorry. Carried unanimously. All right. Next up is the continued... Is the continued site plan review, 235 Main Street in Fair Lawn Ave. Applicant for site plan review. The applicant is Cumberland Farms, Inc. The property owner is 233 Main Street LLC, VSH Realty, Inc., AKA Cumberland Farms, Inc. Applicant is seeking to combine two parcels of land, 235 Main and 8 Fair Lawn Ave. The applicant proposes to raise all structures and redevelop both parcels as one development site, with new gasoline pumps, a convenience store, parking, and associated site amenities. Property is located within the Village Business Zoning District. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of Cumberland Farms. With me this evening, Phil Henry, the civil engineer from Civil Design Group. We also have Chuck Meek from First Hartford, the preferred developer, and then Aaron Fredette from McMahon Associates, our traffic engineer. Maybe point of order first. I know last time we were here, I think there were five members of the board. I don't think Matthew or Roger were here. I don't know if they have reviewed...
Have they signed the paperwork?
I actually haven't.
Well, this is... Okay. Yeah. This is the second... So it's a continued. I just want to make sure that if they're going to be voting...
I can sign that's not a problem. I reviewed the prior meeting. I just need to...
Okay. Perfect.
So we're all set?
Great. I just like to know what I'm dealing with. So the last time we were here was about a month ago, I think September 26th. We had made our presentation. You know, we walked through the site, existing conditions, proposed conditions, and then we had not yet sent out the traffic report for a peer review, and we had not yet sent out the stormwater report for a peer review. The stormwater report is currently out for peer review still. We expect to get that back prior to your November 14th meeting, and so that's what, you know, I talked to Tony before, we'll be agreeing to extend the decision date till that date. That's really, I mean frankly, kind of the outside date under the contract that Cumberland Farms has, by which they have to either fish or cut date from... For this property. We did send out the traffic peer review, and I know that you've got your peer reviewer here, and I think he's gonna give a presentation. We were also, just before we yield and maybe turn it over however you want to handle it, Mr. Chair, we've already... We've been to the zoning board of appeals for... And have received a special permit for the alteration, extension of the pre-existing non-conforming gas use. So the gas use in this zoning district is not allowed, but the gas station has existed prior to that zoning prohibition. So we went through the zoning board of appeals and received their approval last Thursday. And we also received several variances. Certain relief for signage, square footage, parking in the front setback, and also not completely complying with the landscape buffer. I will note, as far as the latter, too, the parking in the front setback and the landscape buffer, those things are happening already, and where I think we're making it better as far as the landscape buffer, we're adding more landscape. So, you know, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you, however you want to. I know we've got the traffic folks here. I don't know if you want to focus on that or anything else.
Did you... So you pretty much got all of the variances that you had requested?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Sure. I think we can listen to the traffic gentleman. If you could just go right up there, just state your name and your business and...
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Kevin Dandrade with TEC, Inc. I'm a principal with the firm, and our primary local address is 311 Main Street in Worcester. I'm happy to perform a service on behalf of the town to do a peer review of the traffic engineering for the Cumberland Farms redevelopment. I issued a letter last week dated October 20th. A good chunk of this letter is more or less confirmation of what was done well with the different application materials, and in some other things, I have some suggestions for some minor changes that I think would be enhancements to the site. Overall, I think it was a very well-prepared package. I think it's a good redevelopment project by taking three properties and taking an existing use and essentially just a minor expansion of that use, but on what I think is a much more well-organized site, and will be a much more attractive site. As far as the site that you can see here up on the screen, just a couple things that I've recommended that be considered. Some things that are not necessarily, you know, per the site plan regulations or the ordinances, but certain suggestions. First one is, you know, there's a pretty good wealth of parking throughout the site, certainly much more than exists today. Recommending that, you know, some spots closest to the curb cut at Main Street be considered bank parking, where, you know, they're designed to work, you know, with drainage and all that, but if they don't need them, it would certainly provide less friction near the main entrance off of Main Street, you know, for folks that are departing the pumps or just turning movements in around the access point. It's a suggestion for, I guess, right sizing the parking, given that, you know, it's a pretty good wealth of parking for a use like this. The... Just a comment about the bollards. There were a number of them along the front. It's just something I talked about with Tony. You know, that typically we'd see one per... Centered in the front of each space with a higher concentration near the door. This is something that's operationally... Something that's not a requirement of any kind, but something that, as you get further away from the main doors, it might make an easier time for snow removal and things like that. But certainly, that's more of a preferential suggestion for something that they could consider. As far as the access to the dumpsters, they have some spaces in here. I just wanted to make sure I know, just in case there was a question. These could be occupied at a time where some of the dumpsters need to be unloaded. I think that's, you know, given the nature of a convenience store, you know, they're not... Any trip is not there for that long, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue to have this temporarily blocked as the truck comes in, waiting for that gap. I figured I'd address it just to hopefully alleviate the concern, given the nature of the use. Number four, you can actually eliminate, because I had failed to notice that... I thought this was just a little alcove of pavement, and I failed to see the actual striped lines for these other parking spaces that will cooccupy that area where the tanks are. I was suggesting that if they were over the tanks, that they consider including no parking signs, but that's actually a place where they intend for folks to park, so that's can be ignored. As far as the traffic impact study, comments five through eight are really just reiterating that we are in consensus with the way the study was developed, the types of factors that they used, the counts that they did to try to get to the projected traffic condition for this use. Obviously, it makes it a lot easier to recognize the type of trip characteristics, knowing that there's already a four-pump, eight-position station there today. There's already a convenience store, maybe not one that's gonna look as nice as this, but that use is already there. So it'll generate slightly more traffic, given the better access, the larger site, the more available parking, and certainly the larger convenience store, but something I think is certainly in scale with what's there, in fact, not having taken credit for any of the other existing building uses that had once been occupied. So, in my opinion, the study was very conservatively prepared, but appropriately done to show the board the metrics of delays and things like that. Overall, I think from an access management perspective, it's wonderful that they can actually eliminate that existing curb cut that's here, which was primarily that right into the existing gas station site, and then they consolidated the two curb cuts that were further to the south. You know, this is the type of redevelopment that I think is a good example of access management by reducing curb cuts where you don't need them and organizing them in such a way as you get good orderly flow between Main Street and Fair Lawn Ave. Sightlines are superior. They did document them. I was out there again this evening, and you can see for nearly 1,000 feet in each direction. And one of the suggestions I have later in the letter only enhances that further, but to try to improve the pedestrian experience right along Main Street. They are already proposing to reconstruct this section of sidewalk along Main Street. This is actually within state highway, so it's not necessarily something that this board has to weigh in on too heavily, because this is... Be something that DOT would consider as part of the access permit for this site. Because of the way that it's set back in this stretch now, you can see it today at Fair Lawn, where we were involved with DPW with the pedestrian crossing, safety improvements here, but on Fair Lawn, the stop bar is actually in front of the crosswalk, where, once you get a second vehicle, you actually block the crosswalk. So... So as they continue with their discussions with DOT, I'm recommending that if they can transition this down closer to the edge of the street while still having a good grass buffer, and there's an existing utility pole there and one there, they can pull it down a little bit where now the stop bar can be behind the crosswalk like you'd have at a normal intersection. That will actually open up the sightlines even better than what they've documented within their study. But again, that element within Route 12, the state highway, so it's more or less a suggestion that they consider as they petition the state for their permit. As we look at Fairlawn and looking at the characteristics for their truck sweep, you can see the outline of the truck sweep here as they come from, say, Sutton Ave, take a left, come down Main Street, take a right in the Fairlawn, and then do a counterclockwise flow through the site to access the tanks or other deliveries. This is pretty tight in here. They're already proposed to either put in new curbing or reset curbing pretty much around the whole edge except for this spot. This is another area where I'm recommending that they do consider resetting it to actually give a few more feet to give some more room for that truck sweep. At the same time, there's already more or less a sidewalk panel there along that edge of Fairlawn. But in reviewing the plans I've recommended to the board, to planning and DPW, that is a great opportunity for getting a sidewalk connection on the south side of Fairlawn that they could build along their frontage. Because if you were to look at the property across the street, there's all head-in parking, and there's no real opportunity for municipal sidewalk on that side. So with the removal and resetting of the curbing, if they were to do the same thing and just hold this right-of-way line and build a five-to-six-foot-wide platform for the sidewalk there, they can get a nice neat edge that meanwhile also gives them some extra operating room here. It's a minor change to the plan, but I think an improvement within the public right-of-way along Fairlawn that I know DPW was, you know, excited about the recommendation because they could continue a sidewalk project in the future into the neighborhood on a side that only has the one driveway to cross. Talking with the representative from McMahon this morning, just to clarify a couple of these comments. You know, there is one utility pole here where the town could always work with the applicant just to, rather than reset that utility pole unnecessarily, work around it just to get that public access for a sidewalk up along this edge. I think that's more or less it for the recommendations. But overall summary is that I think the plan was well-prepared, the study was well-prepared. I don't have any concerns about other off-site impacts, but given the nature of convenience stores, more than 60% of the traffic that goes to facilities like this is already on Route 12 or the adjacent street for some other reason, and they're pass-by traffic that comes in and then departs in the same direction. So I don't expect anything in the way of noticeable impacts once you get away from the site as traffic normalizes. But that's summary of the letter and happy to answer any questions.
Sure, I have one quick question. The first section that you talked about, the front parking, I can't remember what you called it.
Yes.
What was that? You used a term for?
Banked parking is essentially, if they don't need the parking right now, then the board, you could essentially approve that depending on the actual needs on the site. You know, if they, if these spots are occupied all the time and they need the extra spaces, great. But to me, it seems a little overparked.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you just mean, don't build it. Everything's designed for it, but in the future, if you need it, you'll have approval to build it.
Yeah, it could be, it could be grass space for now.
Yep.
But certainly, they, they know their business better than us.
Less than purview.
Less than purview, yeah.
So there was, I think there was some discussion about that left turn coming out of Fairlawn and like an, like maybe interference with that new crosswalk that was put in. Is there anything involved in that?
I, I've talked with DPW a couple of different times about it. I think there was a historic concern about certain trailers that would come out and try to make that left turn. But I think DPW's already checked it with their own heavier vehicles with trailers, and it's worked. That state highway ends more or less right here. So out of all the different improvements along Main Street, this was actually the only one that was within the state's jurisdiction. The state reviewed it. I don't think there's a need to adjust it because of this project unless they wanted to change the circulation pattern to come out here, but that's not what they're proposing.
You want to tighten that, that corner up? Do you want to take that corner in a little bit, too?
Yeah, so this, this would actually give a little bit more room.
That'd help a little bit, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
That would all be done with the state, right? We would not be involved in whatever is...
This part, yeah. But you can offer recommendations for what occurs here, but the state's got the authority and jurisdiction out here.
So are you, are you proposing that we request them to build the sidewalk or just leave a spot?
To build the sidewalk along their frontage. They're already doing the curbing work, so instead of the grass panel, if they did a five-foot-wide sidewalk behind the curbing, then that would be appropriate in my mind for not only a public improvement that happens to be along the frontage, but to get pedestrians from Main Street to their front door because there's no pedestrian connection now unless you're walking through here, which is no bueno.
And if you didn't have to do, if you banked all that parking there, you'd be saving money on, on that part to do. You know, if I did the square footage of a sidewalk in that parking area, it'd probably be pretty close.
Yeah, and I think too that even in their conversations with the state, I'd be shocked if the state didn't say, how are you getting from the public sidewalk to your facility? So I think this is, this is good for the town, but I also think it's good for walking customers to Cumberland Farms.
Okay. I think that's all I had for, anybody else have any comments?
Well, yeah, I'd just like to, what you're feeling about the sidewalk. Fairlawn Ave.
Yeah, I mean...
It makes valid points. There's going to be a lot of people coming down the sidewalks on Main Street to go to Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, I mean, so there's...
Getting the other than walking through your grass area,
Yeah.
under your sign, through the pumps, and into your, into your...
Or even down Fairlawn into it.
Yeah. I don't know if you want me to just address the sidewalk on Fairlawn, and then we can go to the other stuff because we've obviously got responses to, to all of it. You know, I can appreciate what's been said, and while it may appear on the plan like a simple change, I think it, in practice, is not a simple change, right? I think that utility pole, and Phil, maybe I'll turn to you to start talking about, when you start making one change, what it means for the rest of the site. And I mean, we're very comfortable with what we have at this point. And so maybe if you want to talk about practically what those changes would mean.
Yeah, so I think taking everything as a, as a whole, you know, we think the site functions well as, as is. However, you know, you know, adding sidewalks is obviously not a bad thing, right? It's, it's a matter of how, how you do it. So I see, with regards to the Fairlawn, with regards to the Fairlawn, yeah, let me see if I, with regards to the Fairlawn sidewalk and sort of road widening here, you know, that, that utility pole there is not in a, it's, it's in a surmountable location. I, I think if the, if the sidewalk were to be five feet, I don't know if you would include the curb or not, but I think at an obstruction, you, you only need 36 inches to pass at that one particular spot. So, so the, a potential sidewalk introduction can like engulf that utility pole, if you will. But because there would be a sidewalk there, you would need a tip-down ramp. You'd need a ramp there. And, but that, that utility pole would need to be located on the level landing of the ramp. It can't be located on the actual ramp portion of a ramp. It needs to be on the bottom level landing or the top level landing. But I think it would be accomplished to be on the, on the lower level landing. So, and then, and then going further west, I don't know if, if the recommendation is to continue the sidewalk along the frontage. We, we would propose, if the board requires slash requests a sidewalk introduction, we would, we would request that it be terminated here. I think this utility pole is potentially more insurmountable because if you look here, this is only a, between the property line and the, and the sidewalk, or, I'm sorry, edge of, edge of road is just over five feet, while down here, it's, it's over nine feet. So one could argue that you could push this back, say, four feet and still get a five-foot sidewalk because we, we don't want the sidewalk on the private property, and we don't want to get into easements if we could avoid it. We're, we're getting out of a potential issue on Main Street. So we don't want to reintroduce another easement potentially on private property. So however, I guess what I'm saying is, if there were no utility poles, we could, we could snap a line off this property line, say, five, five-and-a-half feet, or five feet, that would, or five-and-a-half feet, that'd be face of curb. And then we would increase the edge of pavement, say, four feet here, and then it would taper down to zero. My, I guess my recommendation or my, my request for clarification would be, I think the side, the widening of this of, from, from here to here would be dependent on making sure we get 36 inches clear, clear with proud of, of the utility pole. And then, and then have a single line where whatever makes sense coming back and tying into a curb, curb line here. So it may not be four feet here, it may be three feet and change. I think it's all be, I think it's all going to be dependent on working backwards from that location. And then once we cross this, I don't know how the, how the planning board feels, but our request would be to just kind of turn it in and then leave this vegetated. I understand that there's a neighborhood behind there, but we, we just, we don't want to get involved with, with the utility pole interaction.
So when you say you're going to put vegetation, are you going to put...
It's going to be grass.
Grass?
Yeah, it would be grass. Well, there's plantings on property, on the landscape plan, but in the right-of-way, we're just proposing grass.
And you go basically extend it to the corner of the building, like wherever you're at.
And then kind of take a 90 into the...
Just 90 into the...
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
My only recommendation for looking at it across, along the frontage is that if, in the event that DPW wants to continue it someday, they'd have to potentially get a construction easement from Cumberland Farms to build it, even if the, the whole sidewalk was in the right-of-way, but there was construction that occurred for the three, four, or five feet behind it, just a feather in the soil. They could potentially have to get an easement, construction easement, temporary easement from Cumberland Farms at the time that they build it. That's why I was suggesting, I was not suggesting anything with the pole, but that just building the sidewalk along the frontage while there's the chance to do it while not needing any easement. That was, that was the goal of the comment was get a facility that can then be a launching point for DPW at some point in the future, but not get into relocating poles. And I'm sure that there's a way that we can look at finessing the curb returns that whether it was a more level crossing in this area versus a traditional tip-down, that we could try to make it work geometrically and grading-wise.
But at that point, too, on the, on the right-hand side of Fairlawn, is, is the strip mall, whatever, is that still that?
Yes, all right through here. There must be probably 15, 16 head installs.
No, I know, I know, but so it extends...
Kind of a mess.
Even with the main structure of Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, I think it, I want to say it goes back to about here.
So it's not that, you know, it's not that, I mean, one of my proposals is that the sidewalk could go on the right-hand side on that side of the...
After that point?
After that, yeah.
Potentially, yeah, and I think...
Cross over and then go that way?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, because it's not...
I don't know.
No, I'm just...
It'll show on Google.
I'm just trying to save down the issue.
That seems, that seems like it's going to be a big...
Anything can be done. It's just, you need, you need space and time to do it. So it's just a matter of who wants...
So I have a quick question. I don't know if anybody, like, any decision-makers are here from Cumberland Farms tonight, but what do you think the chances of us getting like a five-foot construction easement to go along with this approval? Just a future five-foot construction easement.
So I'm not a decision-maker, but I can, I can tell you that that's, to give an open-ended construction easement, I think would be, I, I can't see them doing it. I can appreciate that. I mean, I've seen it elsewhere where a municipality comes to them and says, hey, we're putting in a sidewalk or we're fixing the drainage in a road.
Yeah.
We need a temporary construction easement. And they say, especially in the location that it would be proposed, it's, of course, you know, no problem at all. So I don't see an issue, but I just think giving carte blanche would probably not happen.
I just figured you guys looked like a couple of good guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree that I'm sure in the future, a temporary construction for the sidewalk, I'm sure nobody's going to really care about that.
And you always, you're, you're a municipality, so you always have the power of a taking if you need to.
Right.
Even for an easement.
Send Tony down to take it.
Right. Tony the wrench.
Any, go ahead, sorry.
On 12, that, that sidewalk is, is in the right-of-way, correct?
Yes, that, and they're looking to reconstruct this whole stretch. My only recommendation is that...
Move it further out? Move it further out, right.
Yeah, and that's, that's ultimately DOT's call, but just a recommendation.
We'll have a conversation with them.
That makes sense.
I mean, and again, it's, you, once you start, yes, on the plan, it's simple, but then in real life, it looks like you get some drainage structures. Maybe in the roadway, you got a utility pole there, and so it just, so we'd be hesitant to agree with you for that if it turns out that DOT, because they're, they ultimately are going to tell us what's good, what we're going to do.
And I think for lot, for site distance, too, that cutting that curb back would make sense, too.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, we even, we went through plenty of iterations. You know, one of the problems is if we do go straight across where we're talking about, you know, where the mouse is right now, that's, I think that's right of, that's public right-of-way. This is not, so how it, how it's tied in, like, we can't go on somebody else's, like, property survey issues, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just...
Yeah, so in, in an ideal world, we, we love to just connect back here. We understand the comment. But then there's off-site work that we would need to do opposite the street. So, and then obviously, there would have to be some removal of sidewalk on private property. So I guess we'll see what DOT says, right?
Have you talked to the DPW at all? Have they seen this plan?
We've been at the informal.
You've been at the tech review?
Yeah.
But I don't think they saw this thing.
I spoke with Jared about this.
You talked to Jared?
Yeah.
Does that other one, that potential could be done to fix the sidewalk on the other side of Fairlawn Ave? That is on private property.
Did Jared review this? He said, yeah, I saw this, alright.
The, the setback sidewalks and stop lines is a problem of, yeah.
Yeah, that is on private property.
Main Street, oh, yeah. I live on Main Street and that's an area. I'm just saying, all those side streets, it's the same problem. Just some of them aren't in DPW or DOT space like, like this one is, so...
Any more discussion? Any other questions for anybody?
No, it hasn't, nothing to do with that. I have a sign issue myself.
Do you want to finish maybe with, just because there was a couple of other things on this list? If you don't, if you don't mind.
Oh, I thought we were...
Trying to get to like a closure of all peer reviews at our next hearing. So just verbally, with regards to the, to the land bait part, we respectfully request that we get to, we get to build these, these parking spaces, so...
I got to tell you, you guys, you guys are doing something good because all your, all your facilities, all the parking is taken up.
That's what, that's what we're thinking.
And I have a hard time finding parking.
And this is going to be, this...
I'm kind of questioning that.
This will be, this will be a different... I don't know if you have it here, Phil, but we had, I know for the ZBA, we showed them some interior images of what the new Norton store is going to look like. And, and you'll just see the programming inside is going to be different than like your older Cumberland Farms, and older newer Cumberland Farms, too. You know, you've got the pizzeria piece in there, you've got the, like a sandwich market in there, et cetera. So I think, yeah.
You're going to get a bigger noontime crowd. They're going to need them all at noontime.
The parking, the parking's needed, yeah, that's the...
Yeah, routinely, when we look at sites, they're looking for even 40 spaces, which obviously is, that can't happen here. This is a small site, but...
Okay.
So, so we are foreshadowing that, that response.
Okay.
With regards to the spacing of the bollards at the, at the front of the store, so over time, the bollard spacing had decreased to what you see in here, which is five.
Tight enough on us.
And the, and the issue, as I understand it, the, the result is because of people unfortunately driving into the buildings.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
The idea is, the idea is at five feet...
Why do you think Main Street's so wide?
So, so the theory is that at five feet of spacing, a small car will, cannot fit in between them and will hit one, and like a large SUV or truck will take on two, two bollards at impact. So, so that's why we, and that, and that's just what they do.
No, I believe they've become...
No, I believe they're becoming a fact of life, so.
Oh, yeah. They got sued and I think it was Chicopee where they might not have had bollards or maybe just one and it was.
They might have somebody walking out of the store and.
I mean, you see all the bent ones in front of all the other stores.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they get hit, yeah.
Imagine if Cumberland Farms sold alcohol?
Well, some do.
They do.
So I think that.
Dumpster, and dumpster access, obviously fine.
Yeah, the dumpster access, that's fine, and then.
There's a DOT access permit that the suggestion was to, to have that provided to the town prior to building permit. That's, DOT is a little beyond our control, like, a lot of things, and so the reality is if we don't get the DOT access permit, we can't do any work in the right-of-way, so we're ultimately not gonna get the certificate of occupancy, so instead of saying, don't let us start until we get this access permit, I mean, we would ask for it before the certificate of occupancy, which is obviously something that's going to happen. So that would be the only change, I think, to, to that suggestion.
So what is your anticipated, how long would this project take?
I think typically they like to see it eighteen-week construction, eighteen to twenty, depending on.
So like five months? So during that time, is that facility gonna be open or are you just gonna shut the whole thing down?
I think they shut the whole thing down and just.
I can't imagine.
There's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot that's going on, yeah.
I mean, much as it is a beautiful, beautiful building, I mean.
Well, cheaper.
Any, any other questions from the board?
So I have a question, like, that doesn't pertain to traffic.
Doesn't pertain to traffic.
Not on traffic.
That's the one I was bringing up, that they wanted to get everything.
So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mine is with the height of the sign.
Okay.
Okay. Could you tell me the height of your existing sign you got there now?
I think it might be sixteen feet.
Sixteen?
I think so.
Why you need twenty-five feet?
So your zoning allows up to thirty for gasoline signs, so, I mean, it's obviously something that the, the town has thought about, and I pitched that I gave to the ZBA and I think the probably pitch I would give to you and what Phil and I were just talking about prior to this is visibility, and given folks with, you know, you're looking at gas prices, you're trying to determine whether or not this is a place that you're going to go to, or if it's too expensive, the higher they are, the further back that you can see them. And I know that on the northerly side, where that shopping center is, they have like a V, that, heading south, thanks. They have that V-shaped sign, so I think a twenty-five foot would have the gas price stick above that from the right angle.
I'm just concerned that it, you know, that it's higher than a lot of our other signs on Route Twelve, that's a whole.
Okay.
You know what it is at the Sunoco station? On the other side and down the road here, I don't think it's twenty-five feet high. I mean, just because we say it could be thirty feet, I don't know, I just wanted to, I, you know, as it is now, you can have people walking right underneath this thing going through it, you know, it's just.
There, I mean, there is a planter there, there's a thirty-inch planter and there's plantings all around, just so that people are.
I'm sure it won't probably look like that, right? You will have, it's stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, no, there's, and I don't know that we have, I don't think we have a fully rendered, because what we had done since, between the first and the second zoning board appeals meeting.
Oh, yeah, you do say planter.
There you go, so you'll see the, the plantings, and then there's a planter base about thirty inches, I believe, and where you see it wrapped, you, you see those supports, how they're just white pylons right now?
I know they wanted stone.
Stone, and so we've agreed.
That looks fantastic.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be really nice, yeah, yeah, that was, I think, a really good compromise.
And I think that, that depiction right there shows that, that shows, that's thirty?
That's twenty-five.
Twenty-five, that's what they're proposing.
The undercarriage of the canopy is eighteen feet, so you probably, with the fire suppression canopy, twenty and change. This is just a representation, obviously tried.
What's your best estimate of the sign that's, you know, that triangular sign that's right across the street? Yeah, how tall is that?
I think it's a little bit smaller.
It isn't that tall.
But keep in mind that, that the existing sign is five feet off the property line, less than that, this is, this is almost, I think, sixteen feet off the property line, where, where actuality, it's actually thirty-five, forty feet off of the curb line. So.
If you go to the.
Just concerned your Cumberland Farms sign is so high, you can't see it.
Yeah, go to the other, go up.
How, how high is the building?
Thirty-two, thirty-two to the ridge, yeah, if you scroll, go to the top picture.
The sign is higher than the building.
Yeah, well, the building's a hundred feet back, yeah.
If you go to, go to the top, you might be able to see the, yeah, go one more, I just don't know if you could see in the background.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, that looks nice, doesn't it, that view? Yeah.
I like your sixteen-foot better than twenty-five.
Understood, understood.
I'm just noting.
Hey, I appreciate it.
That sign is very visible that you have now.
Chris, did you have something else?
I just have a question, so on the plans, as far as a fence in the back, so what is currently there and what are you proposing? Just because there's a, there's, you know, it's a very residential neighborhood.
So what, what we see is, you know.
Stockade.
There's a stockade fence stretching from the corner back to about, like, right here, and then it transitions to chain link. That's what we saw on the survey, and it's right on the property line, and then in some cases it goes on to, off the property. So in cases like that, where nobody knows ownership of it, or what the current owners don't know, we, we leave it alone.
Okay, so is it in decent shape or is it in?
I don't, I don't necessarily recall, to be honest with you. It's standing. It's picked up on the survey.
That's about it, it's, it's not, it's not leaning, it's not falling down, I, I wouldn't say it's in great shape.
Yeah, just because, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be a much busier area, I mean, you get a figure that, that the convenience stores set back like that, I just don't know if, uh, noise and, you know, traffic and stuff is.
I would imagine the building would probably block out most of the noise, and the, the traffic's already there, so.
And I'd say in fairness, if those are operational businesses on that lot now, you know, the fence is there now, it's.
Yeah, my, my only comment would be you got the stockade fence behind the building, okay, the building is gonna protect them from, from lights on the cars anyway, I'm more concerned about the ones to the left.
Like number one, two, and three?
Chain link. Or it's just chain leak.
Yeah, show them.
I found a picture from last year, so it gives you some representation of how close the existing building is, so that's the stockade fence.
Oh, okay, so what you're saying is those are all existing fences, you're not putting any fences.
Correct.
Okay, I thought you were putting in a stockade fence.
It's not on your property either.
Doesn't, I think what Phil was saying, it doesn't, it's on the property line, and so that's one of those where who put it in, whose is it? Is there a light, you know, we don't see anything of record for the fence, so in those cases, we kind of say, if it isn't broke, don't fix it at this time.
Residents' houses are versus the property lines anyway, I don't know how far back they go. Do you have an assessors map?
So that, the one right behind is positioned at the intersection of June and Fair Lawn, so, I mean, my estimate would be that it's probably twenty-five feet away from that, at the, at the nearest corner.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about light, okay? The light, you know, with a, with a stockade fence, that property there, they, they're not gonna see the headlights of cars coming and parking at night. Okay, you planning a twenty-four hour, just like the rest of them?
Correct.
You know, so all night long, cars are gonna be pulling in there with their lights on and blaring into the houses next to, behind it.
So if, I just want to follow that train of thought, so you're worried about.
Four, one, two, three, and four.
Yeah, and I, as I'm looking at it.
Some of them, at least you have fences around your dumpsters.
There's three tall fences too, like, that's all screened.
Six-foot-high old white fence.
That's all screened, right, that's all screened.
Well, how can you protect one and two?
So it'd be, and I guess it's.
Maybe just make your enclosure for the dumpsters longer than you got dumpsters, I don't know.
Sort of landscaping do you have there, Phil?
That's, that's.
It looks like it says wood, and so is there wood stand?
Yeah, there, it's, it's, um, yeah, there's, there's, there's certainly a tree line here, there are, there are a number of single trees here, but we didn't show like a tree line because we think that would be truthful.
I think there are trees back there.
There's three or four trees.
Yeah.
Again, but that's not, that's not on your property over, definitely on the other side of the fence, that's.
What, the trees? Um, it, they're right on the property line, like, like the, the overhang though, overhangs onto the property, okay.
Again, I'm just concerned if there's.
What if we, Rich, what if we just like, so we have a white vinyl fence that goes around the, the dumpsters?
Yep.
So what if we just came down toward the street and then went that way, went south to the end of that, what is that area that?
This air tower is right here, is that what you're talking about, or this area?
Yeah.
That's a snow storage.
Oh, so we just came down here, right, and then went over to the end of that, would, continued that white vinyl fence?
That's where the septic system's going, so we can't, we couldn't continue that all the way around because the leachive would be over there.
Up on the back of it, you could.
Yeah, and I wonder if adding a couple of pieces of stockade fence back here, just to, I mean, it sounds like it's this, right? It's this, you know, what are these, ten-by-twenty fills, so it's a twenty-foot area here, you know, we'll just say like, okay, you know, from here, let's make sure that it is at least to here.
Well, I think, yeah, it's a measure, because as you had indicated, we're not quite clear in a plan where transitions to chain link in some of that point, but just to make sure that those spots have.
Right in front of them, so they're not.
Stockade in front of them, so you don't get those straight-on headlights, you know.
Either do it with landscaping or.
Makes a lot of sense, okay. Landscaping or.
Or a couple bushes right along in front of one and two, I don't know.
So actually, I have a comment, so that says chain link fence, but there's actually chain link fence and stockade, so.
Oh, all right.
Makes it easier.
Well, I guess over the years, those people.
People building everything all over the place.
So this is right, this is in the exact area that we're talking about right here?
Continues on.
Yeah, so it actually, there's a chain link fence and a stockade, and you see all of these trees are actually on our side.
Yeah, you can see the house in the back there.
So like just for contextual purposes, like there's the, there's the sunny, the building in the back, and then we're just panning over.
I want to keep the, I want to keep the lights within the, within the.
Yeah, so it looks like, it looks like there is a fence, yeah.
Yeah.
All pacing down.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, so we're.
Yeah, I mean, so I'll say, let us know, because we hope to come back just one last time and then, you know, ideally get an approval, so if there's anything else, you know, I, we'd like it now, and if not, then we have Stormwater Peer Review out, which I think Tony has said you expect by that November fourteenth hearing.
So are we gonna move forward with that proposed sidewalk that we talked about on Fair Lawn? Not all the way.
Yeah, to that, to that elbow there.
To the elbow.
You can make it.
To your building.
Can you make it work?
Core on the building.
Because I, I do expect some foot traffic going there.
I, I think it's, I think it would be a good thing.
I think it'd be a great thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you might even get more foot.
I think it'll cut down on your landscaping fees or replanting grass, too, because everyone walks over it if you didn't have one.
Yeah, this plan's a home run for the town.
Well, again, it gives, it gives people a safe way entering your.
Yeah, there are a lot of kids from the neighborhood that are gonna come to this door. It's the right thing to do.
Makes a lot of sense.
You got that right, it is the right thing to do.
And it's such an eyesore right now, this is great. Those two buildings and.
All right, so we, we said nothing, we don't want, we don't want to do anything with the fencing in the back, is that what we ended up? Because there is stockade already.
Yeah, that's what I see.
And we want to see the sidewalk to that little ninety-degree turn, I can't, was there anything else that we wanted to them to address?
Is it on, to, to Richard's point about parking space one, maybe, do we confirm that there's fencing? And that there's gonna be at, that the light is gonna stay on the site, so to speak?
Well, what they.
Confirm that?
So there is stockade all along the back.
The whole way?
Yes, the whole way, yeah, where the chain link is, it's in addition, so there's stockade on the easterly side and then.
Maybe you can put some small.
So it's probably a scenario where at some point, one person builds a stockade, then the other people bulk chain link.
Problem is the septic, so if we can.
If you can, near the tree, interfere with the roots of the trees if you get your septic that close.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was not that far at the back, it was, I think that.
Yeah, I'm just looking to defuse the light.
Yeah.
I'd be ticked off if I lived behind there and every, every ten minutes, cars pulling up, and even the car that goes and uses your pump, if the air, they're gonna leave their lights running as they're sitting there, pumping up their tires.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anything you can do to keep this, all the light of the vehicles within your property is great.
It's really on those two houses and.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything else from the board? And we're gonna, what, continue this to November fourteenth? No, yes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, too, we're, we're up against an action date as well, the plans were submitted in September twelfth, and so there's a forty-five day for, say, there will be a forty-five day action period.
Okay.
Would recommend that as part of this extension of time, that we also can extension of the action date.
Okay, is that a problem?
No.
So I think you guys need to fill one of these out.
So with respect to the sidewalk?
I would say do it for the, the some, like, for a weekend, it's not one of that.
Don't, well.
Whatever you need.
Okay, thank you. Did you see my face?
Yeah, I know. No, no, I'm just trying to. I guess these guys are gonna work through the winter too, so.
So with respect to the sidewalk, is, is the board expecting us to come back by the next hearing with this sidewalk shown? And the reason why I ask is because it, it makes sense to, to take the sidewalks in totality, because the connection with Fair Lawn will hinge on where ultimately the Main Street sidewalk's gonna be, if it's gonna be moved, so, so, but, but to that end, it, it, it then sort of like pushes it towards like a condition of approval rather than in the plan before approval. So we're happy to do either, but if, if it's the former, we would be showing it connecting to the, to the sidewalk shown on this plan.
That's fine, I would do that, and if you move the, if you move the one on Main Street, then you're gonna have to.
Yeah, we can't do anything about that anyway, so.
You gotta go through the state for that anyway.
State's a lot smarter than us, so.
Yeah.
We think.
And you only got the one light in the back? How, how close are you to that back line on the building?
It'd be close, ten, ten feet.
Two feet, twenty, twenty. And what, you got one wall light over a door or something back there?
Um, there'll probably be some socket lighting here just to light the sidewalk for the walkway back here, and then there's a sight light that will shine forward on you, it's gonna be a shielded light.
Okay.
For the dumpster area.
Okay. As I said, I'm, I'm one for keeping all the light within your sights.
Yeah.
So just ten feet, it's, it's, there's gonna be like no maintenance from the back of the, I mean, ten feet's really tight, I would say, in the back of the building.
That's all.
That's what they're getting.
I think it's like five.
That's all they've given me.
I know, yeah, I'm just wondering how, how, you know, what, you know, how anything's ever gonna get back, not that anything should get back there, but.
No, no, I mean, there's an egress door back there and like, um.
That's cool.
And people will probably bring in some small goods in that area. But, yeah, it's not intended to, like, there's no drive-through back there.
That's what I meant, yeah, that's good, right.
Point of sale back there.
I'm thinking about like even getting the snow out of there, ten feet is gonna be.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be hand and shovel.
Yeah, because we have like a shed in the back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot.
That's a lot of shoveling back there.
Well, ju- just along the sidewalk.
Yeah.
All right, Tony, go ahead.
And, Mr. Chairman, for me too, we also received two communications, one from the Board of Health, dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, in a nutshell, that they, that they are to review the septic plans for review and approval, and following up with the Board of Health agent late last week, she has received plans and currently under review, for the board's information.
Excellent.
We also received a courtesy copy from the Oxford Esthetical Commission, the letter was addressed to, to the building commissioner, and it was with respect to the, the pylon sign, canopy signs, the signs that, along the side of the building. These, happy to read this into the full record, but would note that these were items that were considered through also the zoning board of appeals, which they received their approval on, on Thursday. There was a remaining question, as was echoed here, with respect to the pylon sign and particularly its height, but the concerns have, most of the current concerns have been addressed, so I just wish to share that with the board.
Okay. All right, so we have a request to, to extend the time, the action time for this planning board. board meeting, dated 10/24/22, to extend to November 14th.
So moved.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Roger, any discussion? Call for, oh...
Oh, and just with us, sorry, that they'd be at 7:10.
7:10.
We have a 7:05.
Yeah, you got to work.
You accept that amendment to your motion?
Just list the time, that's all.
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion? Call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously, see you then.
See you.
Thank you. Is there anything, Tony, is there anything else besides the...
No, we've done the planning board reports, now it's the executive session.
Is it too early to do that?
No.
You wanted to take, you wanted to take like five minutes, right, before we did it?
Well, if I may, so, Mr. Chair, the, the executive session, if you so declare, is to enter the executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Oxford Land Ventures LLC versus Town of Oxford Planning Board, as the chair so declares, that any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body.
I just wanted to hit the bathroom before we did that.
Certainly, certainly.
I guess, can we do that, can we just declare that, and then, and then take a two-minute break while they...
Sure.
Well, I think the chairman needs to say, "I move that we go into executive session."
You're right.
Yeah, just read the...
I second the motion, we vote, and then we, you can say, "I move that we take a recess and reconvene in five minutes."
Yep.
Is that the exec, that's just right here, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, I'm, see if I can read this, "I move that the planning board enter the executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Oxford Land Ventures LLC versus Town of Oxford Planning Board at Al, Land Coat Case Number 22, MISC 000463, as the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body." And I, do I do the adjournment part, too?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so, and to echo what was just stated, to notify the public that the board, that after the executive session, the board will not reconvene in the public session, and...
I was just trying to say that.
...in the executive session, a roll call vote must be ordered as well, so therefore, step one, that the board shall not reconvene in public session after the executive session.
Yep.
If you wish to notify.
Yes.